Hi y'all, I know we have folks who have already been here and a few folks coming in. We're just gonna take maybe just a few more minutes, one more minute, Sophia?
Yeah, let's get, we can get started in about a minute because we have a jam packed session today. I want to make sure we, I promise Vivara we end on time.
Hi, everyone, welcome. Alright, let's go ahead and get started. I know folks are gonna continue to come in as we are getting going, but like Sophia said, we have a lot that we want to work on today with you and we think it'll be great. We want to make sure we have enough time and hi, everyone, welcome to session one of our Workplace Climate Action Peer Network Program. We are all super excited to be here. My name is Erin Hurt. I am approaching my one year anniversary volunteering with Work on Climate. It is definitely one of the best things that I've done in the last 10 years and I am really glad that you're here and I know that the rest of the team are glad that you're here too. So let's just begin with a few quick hellos and since we're a global community, I'm gonna start us off in the chat with a few different languages. So feel free to say hi in your language of choice in the chat and answer the quick poll.
Erin, maybe while we do that, if the Work on Climate mentorship team can also just do a quick shout out to introduce themselves, I think that would be lovely.
Awesome.
Yeah, and maybe I'll kick things off. My name is Sophia. I'm a volunteer with Mentorship Team. Maybe not everyone knows this. I didn't, was surprised, but the Work on Climate is mostly all volunteer run, so our whole team here putting on this program. We're all a bunch of volunteers who have decided to, that this is, this is something that's really meaningful for us and really, really excited to bring it to life with you all here today. My name is Sophia. I'm currently in Portugal and yeah, I'm really happy to be here. Passing it to Vivara.
Hello, hello, everybody. I'm Vivara, you see her pronouns. I've been volunteering with Work on Climate as a Mentorship Program Manager for just under two months. And yeah, I'm the Slack Ambassador and Participant Engagement Ambassador for this program, so you'll see a lot of me on Slack and I'm hoping to see a lot of you on Slack as well. So hit me up, chat about anything you want to bring up and just have fun. Over to you, Alexis.
Hi, everyone, welcome. My name is Alexis. I'm based in Barcelona, Spain. I'm originally from New York. I'm also a new volunteer with Work on Climate, really enjoying it so far, such important work that we're all doing and I'm really appreciative that you're all here and I'll be running the
Back to you, Erin. I think, I don't think Gabby is on the call, but sometimes you'll see, get emails from Gabby as well. She's also been supporting us behind the scenes. She may show up in one of our next sessions, so back to you, Erin.
Okay, great. And so it looks like folks are answering the poll and we are, it looks like a lot of folks heard about us from LinkedIn and from Work on Climate. And yeah.
Okay, shall I end the poll?
Sure.
Okay. There with us here as we're getting warmed up. Awesome. Thank you all. Okay. So before we get started talking about frameworks and emissions and all these kinds of things, I also want to recognize for some of you, it might be in the middle of your workday. For others, it's, you know, the end of your evening or the start of your day. And so before we talk about those frameworks and things like that, I want to begin somewhere just a little bit quieter. So you're invited to close your eyes or lower your gaze, whatever helps you kind of transition from whatever you were doing before and joining us today. And I want you to kind of imagine a photograph and in this photograph, think of a place that really just fills you up, that gives you a sense of gratitude, of gift. Maybe it's a real place, your sunlit kitchen table, right, you know, right around 9:00 AM. It could be a forest trail that you're familiar with, the edge of a community garden, a coffee shop particularly filled with people you love. Or maybe it's not, you know, a particular place at all that you can imagine and maybe it's a time, a moment in time, a time when you were doing something that really aligned with your values. Take a deep breath and let that memory, that photograph come into focus. Imagine that everyone else in this room, everyone on this program is now holding their own version of that same photo. And that's what we're really trying to build with this program, Work on Climate, a network of people working towards a shared horizon. I've been reading the book Serviceberry, which is really about like a gift economy and the ways that our society could be more, learn more from nature around how we take and how we give. And it made me think about this, I happened to read it yesterday and I was doing this today, but the image that came up for me was of the community garden. I used to live in New York City and that community garden was one of the first places I found home in a really intimidating city in a very stressful time period of life. And what I loved most about that garden was that it was a place of all, just gift upon gift upon gift upon gift, right? I was shocked to learn that their operating budget was tiny, 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 tiny and almost completely relied on people giving and receiving. And so when I arrived at that garden, they were the reason why I could start my own rooftop garden years later. And when I left New York City, all that soil that was nurtured and spent over the last six years, I donated it right back to that garden. And so I like to think of what we're doing today as a bit of that kind of gift economy, right? I think everyone here on the call is giving their time to you, to each other and receiving knowledge in return. And I think that that gratitude for that gift somehow makes the moment just a little bit more special. And so really deeply appreciative that you've decided to spend 90 minutes here with us today. We'll try to honor and be respectful of that time and I really can't wait to learn alongside you. That's, that's the part I'm most excited about. I think our team will share in a little bit all the different ways that you can kind of participate and share back with us what you're doing so that we can continue to keep giving, but that's, that's what I'm most excited about. So last note is feel free to, in the chat, share the image that came up for you. I'd love to channel some of that energy as we move throughout our program together. Thanks Alexis for throwing that prompt in the chat. One word or image, memory or reflection that you'd like to bring in to the session today. I put up this picture of mycelium, of a mycelial network. You've learned about this recently from the book, but that it's a, you know, it's the threads of a greater fungal organism that like, that is connects a lot of ecosystems together and really recycles and turns dead matter into nutrients and it connects and recycles and regenerates us. I love the park, the park, I'm seeing mountains, a lot of moments in nature, love that. Ooh, the concept of enough here, here. Yeah, and as we move into the next phase, I hope that this program is like this for you, connected, regenerative, a little bit of a gift. Pass it on to Vivara to talk a little bit about what you, what you're getting yourself into.
Alright, awesome. First of all, I've seen some comments in the chat that the speaker volume is not at its best. Can I have a thumbs up from folks if you can, if you can hear me? Okay, I see some thumbs up. Okay, awesome. Thanks, everybody. So what exactly are we doing together over the next few weeks? This 12-week program is designed for those who want to bring positive climate impact into their current role. You will attend a total of five life sessions, including this one and a celebration at the end. You will assess where you have influence in your organization or professional network, create an action plan and build relationships with others along the way. On top of that, in life sessions two and four, you'll have the chance to connect with Seasons experts who will share key principles they apply when driving sustainability in the workplace and offer guidance on how to overcome most common challenges you're facing. In the second half of the program, you'll be matched with small peer accountability groups to implement your plan with support, structure and regular check-ins. We will also interact on Slack throughout the program. We will offer suggestions through our quick weekly prompts. Look out for one over the next 24 hours post this session. But otherwise, you have all the agency to bring what's alive and pressing for you into the discussions on Slack. Another handy thing in your toolbox is the neat workbook created by my awesome teammates. You should have received the link to the workbook for session one in the email reminder. So, and I will ask Alexis to post the link once again in the chat. Here it is. So please either download it to your computer or copy to your personal Google Drive and make good use of it tonight. The goal of this program is not just for each of us to make climate part of our role. It's to grow a culture of climate stewardship across industries, work formats and ecosystems. We are really, really excited about you getting as vocal, visible and hoarty with your initiative trials as possible. Save snippets of your power maps, make notes of discussions with coworkers on the topic, post photos of your first sustainability gathering on social media. You know, even if it's just you and your two work besties in the beginning. Your personal and collective stories need to be told to attract support, power and funding. So alright, off to you, Sophia. Let's get started with your job as a climate job.
Okay, so exactly do we mean why a climate job? And team, if you can let me know if my voice is not coming through, okay, cool. A climate job is not just a job, but sustainability in the title, right? I think many of us have seen and wished that there were more of those out there and more climate oriented jobs, but even, even just as my, you know, I think I forgot to say earlier, but I've been volunteering here for about two years and this is one of the most meaningful things I do every week. But, you know, I've seen a lot of people transition and create their own definitions or integrate climate into their jobs. And I think that can sometimes be even more powerful, right? It's any job where you choose to make climate part of your work and you think about how can I build my influence and leverage? When Erin and I in the early days were talking about how to put this content together, I think we both talked about organizing, right? How can we organize within our own workplaces and our own society to get some of that agency when a lot of times I think things can feel really, I can feel, I believe personally speaking for myself, feel quite powerless, right? And so when you think about your role, that can mean changing the way you purchase supplies, influence strategy, travel, run events, engage your vendors, anything that really reduces emissions. I will make a note here that we're focusing on emissions because I think sometimes, there's many frameworks you could use. Right now, we've chosen to do this. You can define influence, impact however you'd like. But for the sake of today's conversation, we'll be talking a little bit about influence, about, about emissions. And we'll be going with the standard GHG greenhouse gas emissions by the GHG protocol, talking about scopes one, two and three. I'll give a quick overview in case this is not something you've heard of or you're super familiar with. And in your workbook, there are links to additional readings that after this you'd like to run a little bit more. But businesses and organizations will categorize greenhouse gas emissions using these, this framework as a high level way to calculate and start taking accountability for the emissions that they produce. The system helps to us identify where the emissions are coming from and more importantly, who's responsible for reducing them. I have learned this a couple of times and sometimes I get them confused and so I think, I like, I found this today, the shorthand, which is you can think of scope one and two emissions as direct emissions and/or indirect or indirect emissions by, by your organization. And so some shorthand could be that scope one is the emissions that you burn, okay? So one way to think of that might be, examples could be vehicle fuel, it could be the gas boilers, it could be the refrigerant leaks. Indirect emissions is when you, when you purchase industry, energy. So scope two emissions, think about that as like the emissions that you buy. A lot of times this is power, power and energy related, so electricity is huge for that. And at a high level, scope three is all other indirect emissions in your value chain. So anything upstream, so all the missions that are kind of created on the, on the way, on those, on the way for those products and services to land in your desk and then on the way out, everything beyond. And so examples of this could be travel, employee travel, supply chains, product use, waste, leased assets. I think I've read a million definitions and I think the easiest way to understand this is actually through a couple of examples. I know you all represent lots of different organizations from, you know, sizes, a lot of variability in size to industry. And so I'll give two pretty different examples. The first one is imagine like a nonprofit, let's say you're a nonprofit theater company that produces plays, right? So your scope one emissions, those are direct emissions that you control, might be the van that the organization uses to transport the set and props. It might be that natural gas heater that's heating up the rehearsal spaces, especially in the winter. Scope two emissions might be the electricity that they need to buy to purchase what you buy, to run lights, projectors, office computers. Now, scope three gets a little bit more complicated and it can be a little bit more overwhelming, especially if your organization is quite small and maybe doesn't have a lot of power in that full cycle. But this might include all the volunteers who volunteer, who, who do stage management at your, at your, at your theater or the employees that commute from home to your workplace, to your, your theater location. It could be the artists and when they fly in for their residencies. It could be the paper and the programmings and the merchandise and the t-shirts. It could be audience travel, right? And it could be also, you know, any waste that comes out of, at the end of a rehearsal. For this, this, but you know, I think this can be overwhelming, which is why I think partnerships and having conversations and having a collective working on these problems can be really important. Okay, so and feel free to ask questions in the chat. Well, by no means am I an expert on this topic, I'm just sharing a little bit of what I know. But on the perspective of, let's say, a big multinational, like, you know, telecom company, for example, right? Under scope one, your direct emissions might include your service vehicles, your backup diesel generators. Scope two here might be much bigger, I'm sorry, under scope one at like your network stations. Scope two might be all the electricity that you consume to power those call centers, the offices, the server farms, those kinds of things. And then finally, under scope three, similarly, to the previous example, you can think about this as your supply chain. So that could be the supply chain for the fiber optic cables and the hardware, be the cell towers. It could be the partners that you outsource with to do, to do customer service. This could be employee air travel, et cetera. For the sake of today, it actually doesn't really matter if you get it exactly right or exactly wrong. I might have made some mistakes just now. It's really just a framework to get you started and a starting point is to keep looking. Because what we're about to do, and in your workbook, you'll see this image here to give you some examples. The purpose of this is really just to give you a framework to start thinking, where do I have influence? And so if you categorize and you get scope one and scope three mixed up, it really doesn't matter. It's, it's just a framework to consider. Okay, so I definitely don't want there to be any stress about, about that. Okay, so next step is, so now we're gonna start by thinking, where does, these kinds of questions, you'll have to just interpret or tailor to your specific circumstance. So previous to, previously I worked at a small, tiny nonprofit. I worked at a big, large corporation with multiple global offices in finance. Currently, I am a sole proprietor of one with zero employees and just me and myself and I with zero commute since I work from my computer, right? And so, so your specific circumstances and what is in your control and out of your control can change. A few of you guys also wrote in saying maybe right now you're between jobs, you're looking for jobs, you're graduating. So you can also think of yourself as, you know, maybe an individual or a previous job that you've had. Feel free to use this also as just like an exercise. So I'll ask an overall question, but as you're working through your workbook, feel free to adjust and adapt given the size and the nature of your industry. Okay, and this is gonna be in page, I think, three in your workbook. You should see, page numbers might be off actually now that I'm thinking a bit, but you should see this image. Okay, so the first thing you're gonna do is you're gonna grab all of the stars and the star is on the, the left side of this, of your workbook. And you're going to label the stars with anything that your workplace contributes to emissions. So not you personally necessarily, but your whole workplace. Now, if your workplace is like a multinational, global company, you might want to think like your department, right? So feel free to change and tailor the, the scale, the scope and scale of what we're talking about. It might be the, your department, it might be your office, like, you know, let's say your New York location. Or you may want to tailor based on what you know. You might have no idea and so you might want to scope this to like what you're fairly confident in. It could be your arm of the business, et cetera. But you're gonna be thinking about labeling under each of these scope one, two and three. You're gonna be labeling with a star, drag a star to anywhere where, yup, that applies to me. And as you do that, you can also grab one of the purple stickies to kind of like annotate what that is. So for example, let's say you're self-employed. You might want to grab a star and say, okay, yeah, I use electricity. What are your energy sources that power your, your home office or the office that you rent? If you're part of a, you know, really big organization, maybe you want to think about, you know, employee travel. How does your company handle employee travel or operations or IT usage, that kind of thing? So you're gonna ask yourself, where do we use energy or fuel that we have direct say over? We're gonna start there. I'll give everyone about five minutes on this part. Sorry, oops. Alright, I'm gonna grab, I should have put my music on a different tab, but not, so.
Sophia, we have a good question in the chat.
Yeah, please.
I wonder if, yeah, Erin has answered, but I wonder if it's worth just bringing up for everybody's benefit.
Leave to office space. Yeah, I think, and yeah, but I'm not, definitely not an expert at all, call me on this, but I think in the leave to office space part, I think it would be scope two, if you're thinking about like the electricity and things like that to power the office. Yeah, exactly. I see other people have chimed in. Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, feel free to transition to scope three. You might have already done so. You're also gonna just start putting, grab another star and drag it to anything within scope three. Now, scope three can be a little bit more complicated, so you might want to also just like leave a note for yourself and say, hey, like honestly, I have no idea, maybe we should ask. And the level of complexity really depends on the nature of your industry. In a little bit, our breakout rooms are actually gonna be by industry so that you can talk to other people who work in the same field as you to ask and get some more details of this question, on, on some of your questions. But a high level, if you have high level guiding questions, right, might be to think about your supply chain. Maybe thinking about your commuting, your policies around employee travel and employee commute. It might be if you, your company sells, you know, products, it might be the end of life for the products, right? What do consumers, after taking home the products, what do they do with it? What is the, what is the life cycle there? It could be the transportation and distribution of products and items. So that's something else to think about. Yes, exactly. And definitely put a question mark sticker. Yeah, you can, you know, label a question mark, et cetera. Work on Climate luckily is a network of lots of, a lot of experts in many, many different fields. And so we can absolutely gather many questions and, and circle with our networks to. It'll take another two or three minutes to mark up your map, whether that's questions to look into or immediate ideas that might surface. Alrighty, so we'll continue onwards. So the next phase is to really zoom in a little bit. So all those moments and places where you marked a star, I want you to think about two questions. First, marking it with a green dot or honestly marking it however you want. If you like stickers, cool. If you don't, feel free to circle it, draw it, X through it, whatever you like. But this is my, I usually work with high school students and with high school students, I feel like if I'm not being like very, very specific, I, I get blank stares. But, but of course, feel free to, feel free to do whatever is easiest for you. But if you like to play along with the fun stickers, feel free But if you like to play along with the the fun stickers, um feel free to drag a green dot over the ones that you feel like I have influenced directly. So when I think back to my old job in finance, um I worked within the HR department. And so I had a lot of, I could at least influence how decisions around employee travel could be made. I could influence decisions around remote work policies. Um, I had some influence around um our uh food wastage, right, and composting within the building, um those types of emissions. Um, and also because I did a lot of work with contracting and vendors, I also had some decision around how vendors, um the conversations with vendors would go and how we evaluated or brought on vendors. So that's just an example. Um, the pink heart might be even more important, which is to think about what would, if I had just a little bit more support, what could I then influence? So maybe this means that you need, you would need to collaborate with a teammate, or you would need your manager's approval, or you would need uh to collaborate with another department or another office, right? You're gonna mark those with a pink heart. And then, of course, as notes come up, feel free to write them down, draw them down. You can use stickies or, you know, take notes. Because when you zoom out, this, the collective intersections of green dots and pink hearts and yellow stars, those, that becomes really your leverage map, right? A visual of where your potential to act might be strongest and identify where a little bit of connection and maybe a lot of collaboration could really help bring about more impact in reducing emissions at your organization. Give us about ten minutes here to work. Um, please keep the questions coming. We may not be able to answer them all live, but um we have some experts in the room. And so if you see a question that you feel like, actually, yes, I know exactly a lot about this, uh feel free to chime in. Otherwise, our team will answer as many of them as we can and or gather them up, and we can continue the conversation uh in Slack. But about ten minutes on this. You for keeping the questions coming and giving me something to think about. Uh, really great questions. Thank you, thank you. Love the way everyone is stepping into to to think about this. In general, I would say, hi, broadly speaking, if it's someone that you contract with outside of your organization, that's almost always scope three. So you have influence in the sense of like, you can choose who you partner with, but maybe what exactly they do, how exactly their processes work is outside of your direct people. That tends to be. Well, last minute here to wrap up your thoughts. Again, don't worry if you don't get the exact scopes, right? I think um experts who work as carbon accountants, people who actually do the carbon accounting of this, um even there, I think sometimes there's a lot of like overlapping gray area. Um, for the purpose of today's exercise, really think of it as a way to just help you funnel where you have influence. I think that's the most. Um, but feel free to keep the questions coming too, and um and especially if you discuss, this is also quite industry specific. Um, certain industries have a lot more control and influence over certain aspects of the emissions where it matters a lot more. And us maybe debating the exact minutia around something may not matter that much. Let's say if, you know, your company or your industry really doesn't have a huge influence on that section of um emissions. Um, okay, on that note, I'm gonna pass it to uh my colleague Erin to just uh, yeah, bring us all together. And and I think we've already started, actually, all the questions, but um we'll we'll spend a few minutes on that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have so many more questions that I wanna um ask all of you, just looking at what you put in the Slack. But yeah, what, uh, I know folks have already been posting, but if you could share in the Slack what questions or what tensions came up as you were marking up your map? What do you think, y'all? What other questions did you come up with? Or maybe I'll say, I'm looking, I'm gonna um scroll up and let me see if I can find this comment. But, right, is there a way to assess the control a company or startup can exert to influence selection of alternatives? So maybe doing this work made you start to think of other things you wanna figure out, right? Which is like, how do I, how do I, I don't know the answers to these things. How do I learn more information about this, right? So you might have questions about the scope, but you might also have other questions that came out of this. Anybody wanna share? In the chat or if you wanna unmute? Yeah, I mean, you said, I feel like some of scope three emissions might not be accurately accounted for. Are there other ones that you're thinking of or areas that you're thinking of? I'm looking closer. You said hotel operations. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and and someone else is saying, yeah, in a large corporation, you really, you might feel like you don't have a lot of direct influence. Like maybe just in a small area or in a small particular location of that larger company?
Um, sorry, can I, I also think like self-employed also, uh, scope three is a little bit out there, you know?
Yeah, um, Tiago, do you think it's like it's harder to articulate, like harder to put your, like to say exactly how it fits into those categories?
I think so. I think so, because um, like, I am in my bedroom, my, you know? And so the electricity, all of that's happening here, it's easy to put it down, down, down on paper, but the rest, all I can think about is uh third-party softwares that, you know, you know, that doesn't come from me, but and then it's hard to articulate the rest.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I, 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 as somebody who also works from home, I'm not self-employed, but I, just thinking about what you said too, also, yeah, like, something I often think of is like, how would I assess the energy usage across, across my team, right? Or like for you, maybe like the different, like clients that you're working for or something like that, like, is, is that? And is that even something that we could affect, right?
True.
These are, yeah, these are excellent questions. Go ahead.
And then I think sometimes we just miss some things because they would not just cross our minds at all, because they are so unrelated to to us in like the understanding, you know, that we just don't even think about it.
Yeah, anybody else wanna, from the Work on Climate team, wanna add anything?
Erin, I was gonna say that the, the, the challenge of scope three too. Um, the last time I worked in directly in sustainability, bear with me, was like five years ago. And I'm like, starting to remember like these, as I see these questions, like, oh, yeah. Um, so the, the, a lot of times scope three is really hard because your scope three is somebody else's scope one or two, right? And so like, in terms of like who's responsible, right? Like for every leased contractor or subcontractor or someone who's produced, like dealing with your waste, that's their scope one, because that's their direct um emissions, right? And so sometimes I think um the rarity of like having a conversation across industries. First of all, like, I think a lot of our social networks, we all, like, we can sometimes slump in similar industries. And so that's gonna have a part to have that conversation, but to have conversations across industries or even thinking about, you know, we all work in different industries, but we all work from home. We're all remote, right? And like having, starting to have these conversations, I think that is a big, um, this is our first time running our program this way. And so that's a big aspiration of ours, is that, you know, can we um have some collective learnings around for those of us who are remote workers or whatever? And for those who aren't, is there a way that that becomes part of the conversation for remote work? So I think a lot of these, um, the question here around power and how to convince management, these are excellent questions for the folks who are going to be the experts. Um, plug for our um session two and four calls. We have a bunch of experts lined up for you over the course of this program to ask those kinds of questions. Those are people who have done the work at large corporations, um in smaller organizations. They've seen others um start, start. Um, and so I, I wanted, I want to inspire you on the big, big, big level, like see how these incredible humans have really, really done it, but also in the small ways. Um, you know, I, I'm thinking one very tiny example is I um started my job in finance. On my very first day, I emailed HR and just asked them, hey, what do you guys do with food waste? Because my, my employer um paid for all three meals for thousands and thousands of employees. It was like a cruise ship. So there's massive amount of food that was being created and produced onsite and offsite. Um, so that was the immediate question, to just get that conversation going, to let people know that, hey, I'm watching, I'm, I'm noticing. Hey, what's, what's going on here? And so I think sometimes it's easy to dismiss all of these small steps as not being important. Um, but I think they, the, the, when I talk to those experts on how they got to where they are, how do they grow something so big? Someone somewhere started with one question, one conversation, one first, first, you know, ask. Um, and so I think they will have a lot more advice on the specifics, um so please feel free to keep those, those types of questions coming.
I'm still in that line, by the way. Your scope one, three, someone's scope one, that's, that's, that's good. It can get you thinking.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Someone else's direct responsibility, for sure. Someone's responsible down the line, right? So absolutely, okay. I'm gonna keep us going, because um I don't wanna cut into our um our breakout. So um bear with us a little bit. Um, we have um created breakout rooms based on what you put in on your application. Feel free to select, um, I'm gonna pull up um a bunch of breakout lists. Feel free to select the. Feel free to select the, the, the topic that is closest to industry, that is closest or most adjacent to your work. I think this room is full of interesting, amazing human beings. And so if you end up on it randomly, that's totally fine too. Alexis is doing her best live to arrange these breakout rooms. And so if you notice that you collected, you selected room four, but you ended up in room seven, that's might be because Alexis is trying to balance the room. So we don't have one room with like forty, fourteen people and one room with someone alone. So just bear with us here. But yeah, in a few minutes, and you'll have about nearly twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes to talk in your breakout rooms. As we're getting set up with the breakout room list, feel free to introduce yourselves. Once you're in your breakout rooms, share maybe a little bit about the nature of your work. And would love to just start having those conversations and questions around what came up as you were filling this out. Where did you feel like you, and I'm particularly interested in where do you feel like you could have influence? If something happened, if you worked with somebody else and you had a conversation, if you collaborated with other people? Where do you think you could have impact if you've had a little?
Okay, so the rooms are open and they are named. And like Sophia said, if we see an imbalance, we'll, we'll move you around. So don't be alarmed if you end up somewhere else. It's on purpose.
Depending on your device, you may have to click on the three dots to open up your menu and then click on, I think it's four squares. It looks a little different on my computer, so I'm in, but should look like four squares, click on breakout rooms and you'll see those.
I don't know where to go to find this.
Uh, there should be three dots at the bottom.
No, the actual, the actual thing, like where do I? Oh, here, it's here on, on.
Yes, within Zoom, yes, you're all good.
Excuse me.
No, good questions, good questions.
Buddy, welcome back.
And I'm so sorry to cut off some conversations. I know like we were in the middle of one. So it's the worst thing about, the most unnatural thing about having a Zoom call, but I hope we can continue the conversation as well. Anthony, sorry. I know we're all about to be kicked back here.
Well, I'm excited to move into this next section and to hear what y'all talked about in your breakout groups. Because I know where my group left off was really segues nicely into like what we want to talk about next. So, um, yeah, maybe we kind of ended by talking about, oh, I'm sorry, I just lost those questions. But we ended by talking about, um, sorry y'all, the, what's something small that suddenly feels possible? And we all agree that just starting to have conversations with people. But yeah, okay, so let's reflect as a group and feel free to either unmute and share or feel free to share in the chat. You can imagine that using the chat right now is warming you up for sharing your thoughts in the Slack channel after this group. So what is something you learned from someone else in your group?
I'll just jump in verbally or vocally, uh, just to kind of touch on, because we were like, what we were, Anthony was essentially talking about. And maybe he can jump in after if he feels like to fill us in. But we were talking about working in technology and stuff like that, trying to figure out what you can actually kind of change. And they were talking about software, we pivoted over to talking about AI usage essentially. And how it's been talked about in articles online about how we're using AI, the efficiency, a lot of companies jumped on top of it as soon as it came out. I know a lot of companies were literally trying to use the browser chat, like that's how intense it was. But Anthony was kind of talking about how, uh, at some point, like during that discussion over time, a lot of the server places and places that are housing some of the models have pivoted over to more sustainable energy things. And that also in that discussion of whether or not they need to be more o- open about it in terms of their energy usage, what they're using. And way we might not be able to change that, but you know, uh, it's just something to kind of think about.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I, I see other people kind of nodding their heads as well, when some people that have their screens on. Yeah, and I know in my group, we talked about, you know, how could we think about the people that we get our supplies from? And are there ways that we could look for more sustainable producers of those supplies? And that in some ways seems tangential to what y'all are talking about. Anybody else want to add something you learned from someone else in your group in the chat or unmute and share? What about the next one? What would support you in making even 10% of your job a climate job, y'all? What kinds of things would feel like a support in achieving this?
Yeah, can I add something?
Please.
So I think not knowing is the major problem that we are facing. We exactly don't know what support we need. I think just to get recognized what exactly we need will help us to, you know, uh, travel that 90%. So that 10% is having an awareness, recognition, what exactly we need to do. So I think that is from my perspective, I believe that if you're not aware of things, then how would you make changes in the things that we are working on? So that's my two cents on that.
Yeah, so I hear you saying both like more, more awareness in general. And I know in our group, we talked about having, having conversations with people. But then also I think the other thing I hear you saying too is an understanding of what some kind of particular, either concrete actions or solutions might look like.
Yeah, because if I'm not aware that there is an alternative approach to doing things, more sustainable ways, I would probably not approach to, you know, that pathway. So if I, so that kind of recognition, I think is the 10% that will make it a climate job.
Yeah, and I want to read some of what people are putting in the chat as well, which is, um, right, like, uh, more climate change awareness at your workplace, starting at ERG, and somebody else said, yes, a green team with impact. Having a company make a sustainability goal to their contracts. And I know that's something that Drew Wilkinson, one of our guests that's going to be at the next live session, which really I think y'all will get so much out of. But that's something that he talks about a lot is, yeah, like really pushing companies when they can to kind of put, you know, uh, make concrete commitments to doing this kind of work. Yeah, and then somebody else put, right, knowing how badly climate change affects everyone. All right, well, moving on to the, feel free to continue to share these ideas in the chat. Y'all, I see a few other comments. I'm going to move us along, but we can come back to those too. So change doesn't happen alone, and I think we've already started to move into that. And often the key to shifting systems are the people that we already know. And maybe those that we should get to know. So if you want to look at page seven in your workbook, let me just move this over. Here we go. And it says, planning your action step, who do I already collaborate with? Who might be open to this conversation? And or where could I build influence by connecting across teams? And so let's take a few minutes to think about that and write down a few names and then we'll come back and talk about that. So who are some people? You might already collaborate with? Who might be open to this conversation? And where could you build influence? Thanks, John, for sharing that. For folks who might not be able to see the chat, there are local chapters of organizations like Net Impact and Green Drinks. That also could be a place where you could, um, find support for the projects you're trying to do. All right, y'all, so I, I can't really see everyone, but I guess I'm just interested in, are there folks who struggle to come up with two to three names? Does it feel hard to find somebody at your workplace that you could either collaborate with, have a conversation with, or try to build influence with? Anybody finding that especially challenging? I see people, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, in what sense are you, what's the question again? Sorry.
Yeah, so I feel like you're a great example, right? Because you own, you own your own business, right?
Yeah.
And that, and so who might you collaborate with?
Myself.
Are there other folks who also are self-employed in the way that you are, who own your own business?
Yeah, um, not necessarily in the same field, but when I do attend, um, digital or, you know, in-person networking events, you end up creating a connection and even if it's just on LinkedIn. And I have kept in touch with these people and, um, and ended up asking some of these questions to them as well. So I could sort of evaluate if I am doing enough, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I love doing this as a group, y'all, because I think it's useful to see the, the range of experiences, right? So yours, like figuring out, well, how, how do I create a, a network that maybe isn't going to build power in a workplace, but is going to help me be accountable or like figure out how to make changes? And I'm looking at Lex's comment in the chat about having an ESG team, but an international company. So there's no singular North America team. And Lex, it sounds like, you know, there, it didn't feel like there was momentum to build there when you reached out.
Yes, but yeah, specifically like it was kind of, so I actually did this prior to any of this. I had seen that we were doing some carbon accounting stuff and I was like, ooh, okay. And so I reached out and I was like, hey, man, I know we do, we gotta get climate emails all the time about like minor things where it's like, you know, reuse a box in your house and you're like, yeah, I know. And so I was like, okay, well, I reached out to the team and I was like, well, we're a massive company, what's going on here? And they were just like, oh, we don't, we don't do that. We don't, we just do teach, you know, we teach our employees how to be more eco-friendly and like, but we don't actually, I was like, okay. So in terms of, I'm obviously like talking to more people in the company and trying to figure stuff out. But it does seem like there is, um, you gotta break through the, not the green, the greenwashing to a certain extent. I think some companies do like to make a commitment, but they don't make the commitment where it actually counts. For example, we talked about, hey, like I do something with my car to make myself more efficient. And then Taylor Swift is out here using her private jet on the regular, right? And you're like, right? So, so it's like, it's that vibe of, there's a disa, like there's a, a dichotomy there that you do need to break through with corporate companies like that, that do kind of try to dress things up. So just try a little bit harder, reach out to people, look for tools in your company and look for service lines in terms of people doing the actual work. And go there and then maybe you can, my goal right now is to marry the two. And hopefully connect them.
Yeah, that is a great segue into our next chapter. I mean, our next, uh, question that I want us to think about. But yeah, I just want to highlight the other piece of what Lex is saying too, which is sometimes, you know, like the avenue that seems like a stint, like it might be the best avenue, like actually isn't. And then you have to, yeah, you have to kind of create your own group, right? Okay, well, so, yeah, so you said, Lex, what you wanted to work on. And I want to pose that question to all of you, which is, I like for all of us to commit to one small but meaningful next step towards reducing your emissions footprint. So in the next two to three weeks, what is one thing you can try, explore or shift based on what you mapped today? And it doesn't have to be big, but it just needs to be tangible. And so you can write down some of these ideas in your workbook on page eight. And for me, I was telling my group, I have been putting off bringing up at our weekly staff meetings, just that I'm really interested in thinking about, like maybe doing an energy audit across all of us who work remotely. And I just haven't brought it up yet because I don't have a perfect plan in place. But I'm going to commit to bringing that up at our staff meeting this Thursday. And just telling people that I'm thinking about it and it's something I think we should consider. And so y'all, if you want to put these in the chat, we would love to see what your concrete actions are going to be.
Erin, I love your, your idea. And I feel like in the past, when I, we've tried to do something similar, it's so helpful to like pre-prime someone else who's going to be at that meeting and tell them like, hey, I'm going to bring this up. Would you like, would you totally back me and say that you're doing, you're, you're so curious too? Like, I think this is where like the, the talking to someone and like having that action step can be like really much more powerful than things, you know, the stress of doing it alone.
Yes, excellent idea, Sophia.
Love to hear in the chat.
They're allies with you, right?
For sure, yeah, it's, it's, it's organizing, it's building power.
But I think, I, I think on that, just to add, I think, you know, everybody thinks that it's the other person's job to be sustainable first. And so, or people blame, I don't know, Google, why isn't Google sustainable or? But they don't realize that if every single person is a little bit sustainable, that adds so much. Way more than, you know, any company could ever do. There's eight billion of us, hello?
Yeah, because I think when we make change, right, there are, there's, there's creating direct change. And then there's also changing the culture around that leads to those kinds of behaviors. And so when we, when all of us start to normalize, for example, bringing this up, talking about it, advocating for these changes, that starts to shift. And when we change the culture around something, it makes that direct change a little bit easier.
And then if you're not following it, then you stay behind. So yeah, that's true. Yeah, some people, that's the only way.
Thanks, y'all. I see, uh, I love seeing what people are putting in here. Inviting people to an easy and fun sustainability activity, meeting with a contractor about research on the company, doing an energy audit. And AJ, so many other things. I can't wait to hear how all of that goes.
Thank you, thank you. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, and so y'all, what is exciting, what we're really hoping for, I know we said this in the introductory email, is that y'all can continue to share about this in the Slack as we do these things, because we can cheer each other on. And I think that's going to really, it's exciting and it, it helps us keep going, right? As we see other people do these things. I'll share how it goes at my, um, staff meeting this Thursday. Yeah, I see some great ideas here. All right, I am, I'm looking at the time, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Varvara to kind of close us out today.
Amazing, thanks Erin, great work, everybody. So we have about five minutes left. I appreciate you all so much for speaking with us tonight. There's just a few little things we need to take care of before we close. Please take a minute to fill out a quick survey to let us know how we did today. It will only take thirty seconds, but it will allow us to improve and adjust to your needs as we move along the program track. So Alexis will drop the link in the chat and put on some nice music for you all to fill out the survey and then, yeah, and then we'll, when we'll close for the night. Stay on after you completed the survey. I see some responses trickling in, we'll wait for just about thirty seconds longer. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Thank you for attending, John. Everybody else, hold on for just a second. We have a teeny tiny minute of celebration left. All right, okay. So, um, yeah, great work today, but this is just a start. So now I'd like to see a show of hands, who in this cozy Zoom room will join us two weeks from now? On Wednesday, June fourth, same time for some top notch. on Wednesday, June 4th, same time, for some top-notch expert feedback and tailored support around your workplace climate action ideas. Can I see some hands? I'll be here, AJ will be here, Mahak Anu Lex, yay, awesome, everybody. So you know what, I have an idea. Let's all come off mute and celebrate ourselves for being present, engaged and brave tonight. Y'all come off mute and then just cheer on one, two, three. Alexis, how would you feel about, um, unsharing your screen and maybe taking a group photo?
Yeah, absolutely. Let's see. Yeah, if you're, if you're comfortable turning your camera on, we would love to see your smiling faces. I'll give you a second to do that and I'll just do a quick countdown here. It was nice to hear all of you cheering and now we'll have another little memento. All right, one, two, three, cheers. I'll do another one. If you want to make a funny face, I see some peace signs. I like it. One, two, three, cheers. Two, three, last one. I think I got everybody. All right.
All right, I like. You, thanks for showing up today with your energy, challenges and insights. And final reminder, be active on Slack between sessions. It's an essential part of the program that should work in your best interest. Like Sophia said in the beginning, this is a volunteer-run free program. So the best way to give back is to share your wins, questions and reflections in Learn Workplace Climate Action Slack channel. I heard each and every one of you that shared that you might have experienced issues with accessing our Slack. While y'all were in the breakout rooms, I was trying to troubleshoot that in the background. So you will hear from us over the next 24, 48 hours with a resolution. We can't wait to see you build collective power. Um, and we'll follow up on Slack tomorrow.
Thanks so much, y'all. Thank you for coming out and have a good rest of the day.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.